Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to call this October 28th. Meeting of the Select Board to order. This is a remote meeting, so we will need to do a roll call for attendance. So would clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Dane?
President.
Ms. Escobedo?
President.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Hartman?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, present.
Okay, thanks. So now the first item on our agenda is the discussion of warrant articles for special town meeting scheduled on January 19th, 2023. We have at least two additional articles, or three actually, that I'm aware of. One for the additional funding for the Concord Middle School project. And then two from the Community Preservation Committee. One to return funds that were allocated to Christopher Heights and then the other to deploy those returned funds to the Assabett Bluff Project. So our objective today is to discuss whether to put these items on the warrant for the special town meeting. Of course, we will subsequently have a public hearing for any articles that are on the warrant and deliberate at that time as to our position that we're taking on those articles. So let's open the floor. I think in our packet you can see the text of the warrant article as it has been drafted. And I can also update the board to say that yesterday the middle school building committee met. They were able to take $385,000 worth of additional value engineering. And then he and then, excuse me, and then decided not to adjust the requested budget addition amount for the warrant article. So their recommendation to us is to proceed with a request of an incremental 12.2 million. With the hope, of course, that they will be able to reduce that request, or we would reduce that request in the motion for the meeting. But the the feeling, the sense of the committee was that to avoid any possibility of there being a risk that the 90% budget estimate would come back above that and then prevent the submission of bids regardless of the STM vote. Made the the committee back off of deciding a- any lower number to recommend. Last night, the Finance Committee met and they discussed at length what the what the tax impacts might be of such a project. And presented views as to the impacts due to an increased interest rate versus those due to the increased budget cost and and both, of course, contribute to an increased tax amount. There aren't finalized numbers yet. But you know, the the grand total, if, for example, the 115 million number was used in the end. And if a 5% interest rate was what we were able to bond at versus the originally estimated 3.75, the tax impact would increase versus the original 22 STM vote might be as much as about a 20% increase from what was originally estimated. So that is a significant impact and and clearly is a concern at the Finance Committee. I think probably a concern here. And and most the school building committee. So with all of that background, now we can have discussion. And again, the the discussion is not so much focused on the merits of the article, but really upon our deliberations of what to put on the warrant. You can use the raise hand feature or just physically raise your hand if I can see you. Yes, Mary.
Matt, can you give us some background of where we came up with the $115 million number? What's the what's the substance behind that number?
You know, the discussions that have been held at the building committee, there there have been starts of discussions around, you know, percentage contingency and the like. And I I think a lot of times those ended up with a number that was closer to 112 million. But then I think that where how this number really came about was the discussion among the committee members. And then this is my just personal view, not representing the committee. Is that what would be a number beyond which the committee members generally felt it was just too high to even consider, you know, that we really would need to change the the nature of the project. And that's where I think the consensus came out as 115. That that was sort of the beyond the pale number, if you will. And so it wasn't really based upon a percentage contingency or escalation. And there was additional discussion yesterday about that. And and that's what was, you know, leading to almost like a $10 million request instead of 12.2. But in the end, the committee still felt like that sort of, you know, this is the absolute maximum type of number, 115 was where they ended up.
So I guess what I'm hearing, there's really not a lot of basis behind. Well, never mind.
No, the basis is what is the maximum number that the committee would be willing to propose?
Got it.
The town. That's it.
So that's segue to my question, which is, in the horrible event that the 90% came in higher than 115 million.
Then it would be back to the drawing board.
Right, we would cancel the town meeting in in the middle school.
Well, we wouldn't cancel the town meeting. We have other warrant articles at this point.
All right, I see. That article would not proceed.
It might not be moved.
Yeah, okay.
So I I just have to ask a process question. I'm I'm a little bit confused between the difference between a number that I feel I could support versus what to put on the article.
That's right. So again, the number that you could support, you know, that's always possible, by the way, for us to recommend a warrant article in the amount of when we make our recommendation, right? The Finance Committee frequently does that instead of outright like, yeah, whatever carte blanche. Or no, we just say no, we could say we we approve in the amount of in in a lesser amount.
And that we would do that today?
No, we would do that after the public hearing where we get the arguments pro con, et cetera, and and deliberate.
So in other words, we put it on the warrant for 115 and then the Select Board position is?
That's a possibility. You know, I think that the the discussion today about what number to put on the warrant is really about if if there were members of the board that feel that 115 is already, you know, is is beyond the pale of what we should even request the town to consider. That would be a discussion, I guess. But I also want to point out that we have 21 minutes before we must have approved or not moved this article into the warrant.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mary. I want to continue. Mary, do you want to continue?
I'll just say that for me, 115 is is beyond what I think is appropriate. I think that
To even put on the warrant, you're saying?
I do. I think that that's asking a lot of our taxpayers and I worry that it won't pass. And then we're back to go. I've said I said this at our last select board meeting. I think the number is too high. I've heard from several people recently that are that are concerned about that number. I'm worried it won't pass. And then where are we? We're back to go. So I would rather go in with a more a more reasonable number.
Well, actually, I have a question about that. If that were to happen, somebody, this is up to the moderator, but somebody could move to amend and and then bring, you know, a smaller number. So the warrant, I think, in theory, could say 115. And then if the debate was going badly, someone could say, well, I move 110 or whatever. So I think that could happen, but it's Carmen's decision.
Henry?
Yes, well, my reservations about this are the same reservations that I had when I voted not to call the special town meeting for this purpose. And I think that where we are now just confirms my my reservations on about this, especially when we're sitting here to make a decision on the largest expenditure this town has ever made for any project that will forestall any other capital projects for many years to come. And will have a serious effect on those taxpayers who are least able to afford a substantial increase in their taxes. And that is that and and we're called upon to make that decision in like in the next 15 minutes because we do have the ability to either say yes or no on whether this goes forward at this point. I agree with Mary that 115 million is a an unacceptable acceptable number. I think even the 102 million is an enormous stretch when you look at what the tax impact is going to be. And if we put a warrant article on with this number, I think that the general perception will be that the Select Board has endorsed this number. And we do not have a clear, we do not have do not have a clear statement that we can hold the Building Committee to, that this number is there solely at their request and not because in our judgment, it's an appropriate number. And I think we need to reserve the right to object in the hearings and at the town meeting to the number and the tax impact. And I think that ability is 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 minimized by the fact that we have put forward a warrant article with that number in it. But even worse, we have no commitment at this point that the Building Committee will not come back again later for more money. Their guess, this is still just an estimate. This is not a maximum. They have not given us a commitment that they will not ask for another dime from us. So that in itself, to me, is a reason not to go forward with this. It has to be, whatever that number is, has to be a budget ceiling number, not an estimate of what it may cost. And if we put forward this number, it takes on a life of its own. It assumes that 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 is what is available. And it assumes and it takes away whatever incentive there is for the Building Committee to make further cuts. And the kinds of cuts we need with a $115 million project are not $300,000. We're talking $10, $15 million might be reasonable cuts to bring this within a reasonable budget for the project. In addition, we really do not have a memorandum of understanding with the School Committee, who, by the way, has been very absent in this process. We've heard almost nothing from the School Committee on this. It's all been from the Building Committee. But we really need to have a a transparent and enforceable means to police the reduction in the public school operating budget to reflect the promised $545,000 in operating costs. And while people have said, well, of course, the FinCom will deal with this. It needs, we need to have assurance that there's going to be a real, transparent and enforceable process in order to accomplish that. So for the same reasons, for the same reasons that I voted to not put this 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 on, not not to authorize a special town meeting for this purpose. I would vote no on this on on putting this warrant article on this article on the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dane, are there other comments from other board members?
Well, I I find those arguments from Henry actually pretty persuasive. And I'm wondering, Henry, is there a number that you would support? Or are you going to vote no on any number today? Or or Mary, if you have a different number that you would support?
Yes, I would support a lower number.
Something in between 1 and 1.
I guess for me, a psychological barrier is 110. I think we're at 108.6 now, and that came down by 400,000. So we're at 108.2. Matt, do I have my arithmetic right?
I think the the number that I last saw is 108.38, and I don't know why, but yeah, it's right around there.
Okay, so yeah, I I would feel that 110 as the maximum would be realistic. And then you know, what what we're finding is that we are waiting for the numbers and then we're just asking for more. And I think maybe this is an opportunity for us to say, here's the number and manage to that number. And I think it's a reasonable number. And that's what I would, that's what I support.
So does this 110 include that $2 million bid contingency?
Um, good questioning, Terry. I didn't think of that.
Or does 108 include it, if anyone knows?
I think the budget, the 108 budget includes it.
Okay.
I would not accept any number if it didn't come along with a promise that there would be no further requests.
Well, I don't believe that we can procure that promise within the next 13, 12 minutes, excuse me.
I don't mean to think we could do that period. I mean,
That's right. I mean, recent experience has shown that promises like that can't be kept.
Yes, they can. They can, because in any my, there's a difference between people keeping promises and having legally enforceable contracts. I'm not talking about a legally enforceable contract. I'm talking about a commitment that people are willing to stand by.
Any other comments from board members?
You know, I too am concerned about this being successful at a special town meeting. And I actually concur with Mary's suggestion to come in at 110.
Okay, my, let me just weigh in on my perspective here. I I feel like all of these discussions about what the appropriate number are, are things that could be done at the hearings and even on the floor of town meeting. That really what we are doing is we are constraining the the opportunity of the town to vote on this project. We are saying essentially, they don't have the choice. If if this project costs more than 110, that's it. They're just, they're not going to get the opportunity to vote for that. So I just feel like we can have our opinion about what we think is the the appropriate number. But this is right now, we're just saying if if we choose a lower number that 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 we're not giving the 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 voters the opportunity to vote that. So just wanted to, you know, say that that's it. It's our prerogative. We can do it. It's just that I want to be clear about that. Yes, Mary.
Now, are we already doing that, though? Because we already have a budget and we're saying we can
Yes, we do. We have a budget.
So we're already, we're already doing that.
One organization's view of what that beyond the pale is, is 115. Maybe this body's, you know, view of that is is 110.
Okay.
All right. So I guess I'm going to ask for a motion. Because again, we we actually have to discuss two other articles before 12:30.
May I say one more thing? And that is that there is such a thing as exercising the leadership that has been put upon our shoulders. And just to say that we're going to throw it out there for the voters to decide, I think is an abdication on our part of our responsibility. But even more important, it would be one thing if there's going to come up at the annual town meeting where there would be a representative sample of voters. But a special town meeting held on January 19th is probably going to be like the one last January where only 400 or 500 people showed up. And that will be a carefully curated constituency.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I had, okay, go ahead, Mary.
No, go ahead, Terry. I'll wait.
Well, I had two quick comments. One is about it, the 548,000 in operating expenses being transparent. I do agree it should be. And I have heard Superintendent Hunter say several times at public meetings that they are going to do it. But I agree with Henry, it would be good if the School Committee would vote or they could put it in a meeting somehow. My other comment just really quickly is, I originally agreed with Matt. Let let the town meeting decide. But I'm I'm finding Henry's argument really persuasive that whatever number the Select Board puts on the warrant is going to take on a life of its own. That is really true. So I think I'm going to support Mary's 10 million, 110 million number.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I I moved that the article for this Concord Middle School Building Project be capped at $110 million.
I I think we need a a motion that is more like, you know, I move that we you know, that it that it reflect the text in the packet except for the, you know.
Okay. I need help with the math because my calculator doesn't run, doesn't, can't think that high, can't can't do numbers that big.
Are we going to have two motions, one to amend and then a second vote to adopt or reject the amendment?
No, I we're, I'm changing the motion as it was written.
Right, so it would be for 7.2 million.
The income, great. So I moved that the that we adopt the motion as shown in the packet with the number of 7.2 million for a total of 110 million and otherwise as shown in the packet.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Dane?
No.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye. So I guess the motion is read to.
Passes. So we need to move very quickly now to the next item, which is the Community Preservation Committee article to return funds that were committed to the Christopher Heights project. Any discussion on that? First of the two warrant articles? If not, I'd like to take a motion for that.
Move to include this article as shown in the packet in the special town meeting warrant.
Which article are we on now? I'm sorry.
That's the one to return the funds that were committed.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I.
Um, Linda? On this article?
Sorry, can you repeat the motion?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Move to recommend the article five is written in the packet and five is just an arbitrary number right now, but is it's identified in the packet as such.
Returning the funds from the Junction Village project to the
Community House Reserve Fund.
Aye. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye.
Okay, now we need to look at the one labeled as Article Six, Community Preservation Committee Appropriation Recommendation to reappropriate that sum that we just voted to put on the warrant to the Assabett River Bluff Affordable Housing Project. That's that's what they are asking.
Okay, so I have a question about this.
Sure.
I don't understand why we're doing this. We had a different plan for Assabett Bluff before. Um, is this something that we should maybe go over when we have the public hearing and just put it on the warrant now or or point out?
Yeah, I think that there's a lot to discuss about this. I had previously heard this is characterized as going back to the Affordable Housing Trust, which I I thought would have been pretty neutral, you know.
Right, right.
This is a more, you know, specific action. And and while it may be a very good one, I you know, I don't have any context, so.
Okay, that summarizes how I feel, right? So do you think we should put it on the warrant?
I think we should put it on the warrant. Yeah. And then maybe a quick question for the moderator. If on the town floor, meeting floor, someone asked to amend to send the money to the Affordable Housing Trust instead, would that be outside the scope of the article or would it be still in scope?
I think that would be out of scope.
Okay, then the money would just sit in the reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay, but then we have annual town meeting, so.
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you.
So
Yes, Linda.
If I may suggest, there was a great deal of discussion on this topic in 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 the committee and you know, one of the other things that was considered was to have this transferred to the trust but for affordable housing purposes rather than for the Assabett River Bluff Project per se. And the reason for that suggestion was so that it does not preclude the trust doing its due diligence, requiring an application and thorough review before it would be assigned to Assabett River Bluff. And so I think that is the committee, quite frankly, this, I'm not talking about the CPC committee the other night that was struggling with this language. Others from other housing groups were also present at that meeting, quite frankly, ran out of time at the very end to finalize that wording. So I I think that more accurately reflects what would enable these funds to be used in the timely way that the trust is set up to allow to happen, but also for the trust to be clear about its own due diligence process. So I I was at a another meeting or housing group meeting for the CHCD earlier this morning. And I I think they, in fact, saw that as a pathway forward.
So we have 30 seconds to approve this.
Well, I'm wondering if this could go on the annual. It does seem like we're rushing.
I I would say that's a fair statement.
I mean, I I kind of support what Linda just said. I mean, what if?
I actually just got revised text from Chris Carmody. So no, I I think this has to be annual town meeting. So the one to put it in the reserve fund will be in special. And we'll need to go to annual for for what to do with the money. Okay, we're at 12:30, we're done.
Okay.
Um, Carmen?
Good job, man.
Were there, were there any petition warrant articles submitted?
No, there were not.
There were not. So now we're moving to our next agenda item, which is the ordering of the warrant. So I think that you can see a proposed numbering in our packet. So
Right, so I want to, I want to bring something up about that. I'm just wondering if it's better. If the school articles first, there will be many people that leave after that.
um if the school articles first, there will be many people that leave after that. And the other articles might be very quick.
Or they may be on the consent agenda.
Right.
Right, so I just think we could think it through um in terms of the crowd um. The best way, you know, one possibility is to put the school last, and that way you have more people for all the articles. Although not necessarily, but it's just something to think about.
I think, yeah. So it's a tricky question. Um, any, any other? So do we put the opening act first or do we put the main act first?
No, I, no.
Yes, Mary.
I I would think we should get, have the main event at the end and and hopefully these other ones will get through quickly and maybe even be on the consent cap agenda like you mentioned. And then um and people will hopefully stick around for that and stay for what's important to them.
Okay, any other, any other input? Um, so I believe then that we would uh recommend now to reorder the articles as as written in the packet except for with uh, of course, Article Six is not being included as written in the packet. And then secondly, what is currently Article One becomes Article Five and all the other articles move up one number. Okay? I don't know if that really counts as a motion.
Yes.
That I think it is.
That is so moved.
Second.
Um, any other further debate? Uh, then uh, let's have a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Is uh, Miss it, uh, Miss Hartman?
Hi.
And myself, Miss Sacramento, hi.
Okay, thank you. We now have an ordered special town meeting warrant. Um, now, the last item on our agenda is about uh the um the public hearings. So we currently have on our calendar a uh Finance Committee hearing, but now we have some articles on the warrant that are not finance related. Okay, so we need to, I believe, have a, you know, select board hearing. Now, up until last night, I thought, oh, well, we'll just uh, you know, jump into uh the Finance Committee's hearing. But uh in the discussions last night, i- it it's uh, they're already just slammed uh when it comes to the their agenda for that evening. So I think we're going to need uh to, you know, take some time perhaps at one of our uh select board meetings. Um, and I don't think that this hearing is going to be very long, right? There there are four articles to consider. Um, and uh I think there will be some debate maybe on on one or two of them, but uh that uh, overall, I I think that these should go fairly quickly. Um, so if we said, you know, at the outset of one of our meetings, and I'm trying to think of the appropriate timeframe, um, that, you know, the first hour or so we we schedule uh for the public hearing, the select board public hearing, we would then hear those articles. Um, the other possibility too is, you know, we could hear the middle school article in the select board hearing. It's just that I expect that there would be a lot of overlap, you know, between that discussion and what happens at the Finance Committee hearing. Right, so. Um, so.
Um, also, some of these um other articles are financial, right?
Well, the number five, number, uh, sorry, the uh, the one about changing the funds to the reserve fund that they will discuss on fin- in finance. Yeah, so maybe we just do three. And then the Finance Committee does, so we do articles um one, two, and three, and then four and five would be at the Finance Committee hearing. Okay?
Okay.
As we've renumbered them. Okay, so when we think about the the timing, um, the November seventeenth uh hearing is for Finance Committee, and then we have scheduled meetings. Let's see what are next.
The twenty first and the twenty eighth.
I think November fourteen and November twenty eight.
Oh, good, okay.
And and the fourteen, fourteen is the classification hearing.
Yeah. Can we do it on the twenty eighth?
Yeah, I I think so, right, um.
Not going to be too late?
Well, we're we're showing the deadline for um submission for the FinCom report is December eight. So I I assume the twenty eighth.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's put that in then. So the select board public hearing, n- n- are are you okay with that, Carmen?
Sorry, yes, that works for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I think we should go for it then. Six thirty PM, November twenty eighth, and we'll do Articles one, two, and three. And uh, okay. Uh, then I believe we have no other business before us for today's meeting. Um, so could I, I I, since this is a remote meeting, I am going to go ahead and and, well, no, I can just go ahead and and adjourn. So thanks everyone for your time uh in this unusual timed meeting, and uh I think we we got through our agenda.
Great, so our next meeting is November seventh, is that right?
That's right.
Great.
Okay, see you then.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye, thank you.